Okay, calling to order the meeting of City Council for the City of Hayden, Idaho. It is 22nd of July. It is 5:00 PM. Can we get a roll call of council members, please?
Council President Roder.
Yes.
Councilmember DePree.
Yep.
And Councilmember Schaefer.
Yes.
Councilmember White is absent. We do have a quorum.
Okay, we have a quorum on that. Council, please, in the future, let Abby know if you're not going to be at a meeting and let me know. Abby is responsible for us to have a quorum, and I have to run a meeting and finding out secondhand somebody wasn't going to be here at the last minute. If I schedule a meeting and didn't tell you, I'm sure that you would understand, so I'm putting in that context. With that, Matt, would you lead us?
I do. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by its own right and liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I have no additions or corrections to the agenda tonight. Assume staff doesn't either. We're going to move on to consent calendar. Before I hit the consent calendar, also, thank you, Tom. It's 1:00 in the morning where you are. We will try to get through the agenda as quickly as possible, of course, without compromising quality. Our consent calendar consists of approving the July 8th, 2025 city council meeting minutes, approving the July 10th, 2025 special city council meeting minutes, approving the July 15th, 2025 special city council meeting minutes, approving and authorizing to publish the fiscal year 2023 fourth quarter and fiscal year 2025 third quarter financial reports, approval of change order number four with Simcoe Construction for the H6 lift station, acceptance of Dirty Birds LLC extraordinary transportation impact mitigation repayment agreement, approval of Wayne Plaza final condo plat, acceptance of Kaylee M. Broker, dedication of right of way and grant of easement, and approval of bills for payment. Any questions about the consent calendar?
Mayor, I just have one on item F, the extraordinary transportation impact mitigation repayment agreement. That's a mouthful. Is that the first one that we've executed this year?
This year, possibly, but not in our past.
Okay, because I know that's something that we're doing now, which is a great idea.
No, we've done them in the past. We've just are looking at it at a larger scale with extraordinary impacts. Does it relate to certain developments' impact? But this is specific to a build out of a commercial property.
Right, and the idea of extraordinary is that because of our congestion with the roads, this will help, and that's really a good thing. So for the public, that's to let you know we're doing the best we can.
Thanks, Matt. Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Sure.
Thanks, Ed.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar, items A through I, as noted on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any questions? Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Schaefer.
Yes.
Council President Roder.
Yes.
Councilmember DePree.
Yep.
Okay, moving on. Visitor public comment. Abby, do we have any cards tonight?
I do not.
Okay. We shall then move on to commission reports. First up is Stephanie Satterfield, Nancy Jones with the Arts Commission. Dun, dun, dun.
Dun, da, da, dun. I'm back. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is our quarterly report for the City of Hayden Arts Commission. We've been really, really busy. I have a packet for you that you can go through later. I'm just gonna kind of summarize everything, okay? We, as the Mayor has requested, each month, we are working on policies for donated art in the Arts Commission, aiming to finish for council review by the November quarterly report. Our family fall festival, Polka in the Park, will be September 13th. We still need volunteers, so if anybody wants to volunteer, it's going to be a lot of fun. And that's also when we'll be doing our youth program with Dan Conley. So if you're interested in volunteering, please get ahold of City Hall or myself. We have been working, well, actually, we've prepared a public art survey for Hayden residents. Vice Chair Nancy Jones led the project, and she'll present it to you at another time once the commission has voted on it. Then we'll bring it before you. We're looking at doing a call to artists. The Arts Commission will be putting out a call to artists to create and design a new logo for the Arts Commission, which the city will then own that logo. We will also be asking the schools of all ages to participate, and we are also working on the criteria for a call to artists for the Come Together Bench program. The benches have arrived. So that's been a long wait, and we're really excited. I have six of them sold. I need three more to be sold at $2,500, which goes to the artists' forest supplies and their art. And then, basically, we meet the first Wednesday of each month at 3:00. Anybody and everybody is welcome until the Fall Festival. We do have a workshop at 2:00 on the first Wednesday. Please join us if you would like. And other than that, the commission thanks you very much for the opportunity to beautify Hayden with art. There is nothing like art to bring a community together. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Stephanie, thank you. Thanks.
We appreciate it.
Yep.
And then, Council, there are some second quarter written reports that I believe you guys have any questions, we can discuss, and if not, we'll move on. Not hearing any questions, so we'll lead off with our first new business item, which is an action item, to consider the National Night Out as a city-sponsored event and authorize the Mayor to sign a support agreement. I believe Deputy Goodman's in the audience if you have questions, but there's a recommended action or motion in memo, and I will turn over to you to discuss it.
Yes.
Yeah, to Council, yeah.
Yep. Thanks, good idea. We've done it how many times before, probably? Engages the community in a very positive way, and I'm full support of it.
I think the trick, I think the decision here is that as a city event, if you approve that, then you would be endorsing a fee waiver.
No, it's not.
Sorry.
There would be no fee. There'd be no fee. You don't charge fees on behalf of the city to ourselves.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
So basically, this is an application to consider this event as a city-sponsored event, which would not require a fee to ourselves, and as such, they would theoretically be covered underneath our insurance as well, but they're also bringing their insurance in. So it's essentially, the first line of defense would be their insurance and then ours after that. It's definitely an area of interest from the city staff that we want to bring some parameters forward on these events, but for now, we feel like this is a good example of one where we would team up with an adjacent taxing entity for betterment of our community.
Matt?
Yeah, so I just see that the financial impact to the city is estimated to be less than $1,000, so this is really minimal impact for this event. I think it's important that we have events similar to this to bring our community together and to rub elbows is a good thing.
Okay. Tom, any comments?
No, I don't have any, but thanks for asking.
Okay. Is there any more discussion needs to be made, or is there a motion that council member would like to make?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we approve and authorize the Mayor to sign the support agreement for the National Night Out sponsored event.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Schaefer.
Yes.
Councilmember DePree.
Yes.
And Council President Roder.
Yes.
Okay, our next item is a little, it's ahead of the budget, but right now, we contract with Post Falls for Prosecution Services, and so our action item here is to consider continuing that relationship with an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Post Falls Prosecution Services for Fiscal Year 2026.
Have any answer, any questions you might have?
Pretty much just a continuation of what we've been doing.
There is a slight increase. I think it's a little over 3%, which covers their cost increases for the services they provide, which includes not only the prosecution services, but also their support staff that assists the attorneys in that.
All right. Now, bottom of page one of the memo has a motion if Council so wishes to make one.
I have a question, if I may, Mayor. Does Post Falls prosecute all criminal actions in Hayden, or does the county prosecute some of them? And if they're different, why are they different?
Post Falls Prosecution Services cover your misdemeanors. Cooney County Prosecutor's Office covers felonies.
Felonies, so it is, so just out of curiosity, have we been getting any reports checked?
Yeah, she was giving quarterly reports. I've prompted them to get us our last quarter report because they lost their attorney to the court system. So my hope is, and we've been talking about more measurable results for data on our quarterly reports that they're working on trying to get.
Go ahead, go ahead. Did we have a, even, did you get a report? How many felony prosecutions out of Hayden? Do we have a report?
We have to get that from the Cooney County Prosecutor.
We don't have it?
The prosecutor at the county level.
They would have to, yeah.
That we can certainly ask.
Yeah, I'd appreciate to know that.
And that is paid, at the county, we're not paying any extraordinary fees to the county. That is coming out of, this is the Justice Fund?
That would be covered by your Justice Fund dollars.
Right, so that's like $2.5 million that the citizens of Hayden that the prosecutor is being paid out of for those felonies. Okay.
Do you, do you have a specific timeframe you want? Well, it's a portion of that. I mean...
We get a year-to-date report on our monthly report.
If your Justice Fund contribution is $2.5 million, only a portion of that.
Right, right.
Whatever.
It's included in it.
The felonies at the Prosecutor's Office.
Okay. Any other questions about our intergovernmental agreement with Post Falls? Tom?
No questions, just to want to acknowledge that Councilman Roder and Councilman DePree sort of asked the questions I was going to, which was, when do we get reporting from both Post Falls and the county entities on what the changes are year to year?
Currently are not receiving reporting from the county because you don't have a separate contract for accountability. It's not that it can't be asked for from the Cooney County Prosecutor's Office for your felonies. We'll do that.
Is that something we can do in the future?
Yes. I'll reach out and ask for that.
Any other discussion? Anyone want to fathom a motion?
Sure.
Thanks, Ed.
I would, what am I doing here? Let's, this is staff recommends. I would move to approve the authorization there to sign the intergovernmental agreement with Post Falls for provided prosecution services for fiscal year 26.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Council President Roder.
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Yes.
Councilmember DePree.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Our next item is action item, Cooney County Public Transportation Agreement, City Link for Fiscal Year 2026. This is our fiscal year 26 contribution of a little over $13,000 for public transportation throughout the city and the county.
Throughout the city. It's our contribution.
Well, yeah, but the service, but the service does cover parts of the county instead of the city.
One would argue that.
Fair enough.
I have a question, if I may, about the term contribution, and I've seen that also associated with our potential contract with the Sheriff's Office or the county for public safety. I'm just curious why we use the term contribution, because it almost sounds like we don't have to do it, but we want to do it because we like it. But can you explain?
So the federal dollars that come in to support the transit program for the cities and presumably the county require a certain level of contribution for those funds by the receiving beneficiaries, so the, all the cities and the county. And it's not to cover the cost, it's to cover towards the cost of it, and then the federal money comes in and covers the rest. It's part of the application process to FTA.
Who comes up with the numbers for what each entity contributes to the total cost?
The metric is simply based on population. So the more population you have, the higher contribution amount you support. And the cities, city administrators met on that a couple months ago to determine whether or not that was an adequate system of equitability, and they determined that they felt that that was population-based. So the City of Hayden pays the least amount or the smallest community currently participating.
So it's basically proportional in relation to population, yeah?
Right.
And this is not a mandatory, this is a volunteer payment?
And we budgeted it for as long as I've been here and likely a number of years before I got here because of the value that our citizens receive as part of the service that they provide.
Any other questions? Would anyone like to make a motion?
Okay.
Well, I guess I will do it remotely if that's...
Fire away, Tom.
All right, I'm gonna get back to the memo, so I need to hop quickly. So I motion that we recommend approval and authorization of the Mayor to sign the public transportation letter of agreement.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion being made? Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Council President Roder.
Yes.
Councilmember DePree.
Yep.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Yes.
Okay, our last action item tonight is to consider a resolution to declare property surplus. From time to time, our city surpluses excess equipment. Staff has prepared a memo that shows, I think it's two vehicles, that we are wanting to surplus and need council's approval for such. Any questions for staff?
I'm curious how they're auctioned or put up for sale.
Yeah, we have a public auction site that we work with, and it is, gets traction, I guess, more widely, so we might get some interest across a larger area with that format. And so far, the items that were previously surplus are currently up for bid right now, and you can go on and see those and see how it works. But yes, it's a public auction site.
Do we, do we pay on like a percentage base of the sale type of thing?
I'd have the app. I don't believe...
10% or whatever?
Is it a flat fee?
No, the city does not have any additional costs. The buyer pays an additional cost.
So the city doesn't pay commensurate costs with that? It's just the buyer pays for it?
Yes.
Oh, good.
And how are the prices set? Because I look at that pickup truck, I'm thinking that's probably a pretty good deal.
Well, you can see how they set the price based on Kelly Blubick value there. Well, we work closely with the Public Works Department to determine what condition the equipment is in and whether or not there's value based on market, call it. And, you know, some of it's based on our staff's recommendations, and some of it's based on professional information that we can get.
Tom, are you thinking about investing in a sweeper?
He's not allowed to. City staff and council.
Yeah, I thought maybe I'd go into a second job.
Is there a minimum bid, or pretty much if someone comes, only one bidder comes in at $100?
Yeah, so the way the law works is you set the price value, and if you get no bids on that, then you can sell it for whatever you deem to be of value. So if you get no bids, then you can turn around and sell it for whatever you want.
But is there, is there a reserve on the auction listing?
The amount that you see on the Exhibit A of the resolution is the base amount that we would set it for.
For the truck, $700 is the reserve amount, I would guess, type of thing. If no bids come in and someone then comes in $500, we have the option to take it or not.
You don't have to sell it for that amount. You can choose to sell it.
Have the option to then respond to any, any bid.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Except for bids from staff or council members, just so you know. Right, let me be clear.
Or the Mayor.
Anybody who has any relationship to the city business is not allowed.
Uncle's cousin's sister, like.
Nope.
All right, is anyone to make a motion on this action item, please?
Sure, I'll make the motion that we declare the items listed on Exhibit A a surplus and authorize those to be sold at auction.
Thank you, Matt.
Second.
All right, we got a motion, a second. Any discussion on the motion being made? Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DePree.
Yep.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Yes.
Council President Roder.
Yes.
Okay, we're moving on. City Administrator Report, Calendar Review.
Yeah, really quick, I'll make this hopefully short and sweet, but Hayden Days is upon us.
Lisa, could you speak up or speak into the microphone a little bit?
It's actually that one in between Donna and Tom.
Oh, that one?
Yes, sorry, or Tom, yes.
Oh, this guy.
Okay, hopefully this is better. I can't cover my notes.
Oh, way better.
So Hayden Days is upon us, Friday and Saturday. Hayden Days starts 2:00 PM on Friday, and then it goes from 2:00 to 8:00, and then on Saturday, 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And as you know, there's a parade, so hopefully we'll see you all there. The administrative staff has really been, for me, has been focused on assisting in the budget process, and we're working really at getting you a budget presentation for next Tuesday at, I believe, 5:00 PM. So I'm hoping you all can make it for that.
Can everyone make next Tuesday 5:00 PM for the budget meeting?
Yes. That's been on our schedule, hasn't it?
Correct.
Yeah. Matt, you're probably gonna chair that one. I'm out of town for work.
I don't know.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you're planning on me being there for that meeting or not. I need to know.
I don't, I believe that if you're not there, there should be a quorum, but you essentially, as an action item of that meeting, would be authorizing staff to publish the budget so that we can move forward with our public hearing that's a few weeks later. So I would encourage you to try to be there, Tom, if you can, but understandably, no.
At what time of the day would that be?
5:00 PM.
5:00 PM, oh.
Stay away from the Fino that day.
Yeah.
And then I did kind of corner Public Works as they walked in here today to give maybe an update on the Ramsey Road project. Councilman DePree came in earlier, and I misled you. I thought Lancaster was open, but it's not, apparently so.
It is open.
It is or is not?
It is. I said I didn't know, but it wasn't open yesterday afternoon. It opened this morning. They got all the signage in, and it is currently open.
And when is the anticipated completion of the extension into it, you know, the...
So the extension into it is largely paved, and the multi-use path is there. There's a bunch of work in the swales and side that has to go on there, but they're turning their attention right now to head the other direction to the south, up buckles and around current Ramsey. That'll all be future Ramsey. And they're going to be putting in driveway approaches, curbs, swales, all the way around there, and the coordination for mid-August with the MDM contractor who's coming from the south on Ramsey from Lacey, they're gonna...
We're not gonna have any...
The projects overlap right there. No, they overlap right there, so they're coordinating who's doing what in that phase, and...
Mid-August?
That's when they should be connecting there. The September is probably a more likely...
You have a ribbon cutting or anything?
We like our ribbon cutting.
Most likely.
We're gonna have you stand in the middle of the road.
With big giant scissors?
But, but the good, the good news to report is Lancaster is open, and there was a little bit of a delay there, but it is operating smoothly and open as of this morning.
Thank you.
Did we get a law enforcement report this month? I don't recall the last meeting.
Received one.
We need to get Captain Smart back in on...
I think they owe us almost two months worth of it.
Yeah. I'm looking at you, Captain Smart. All right, any reports from a council member?
Sure. I guess I have two of them. Matt might want to also, regarding Harbs again. They had their meeting, was it last Thursday or whatever? And I can't emphasize enough to the people who hopefully might be seeing this or whatever, to start watching it, listening to it, paying attention to it, understanding what's going on, because there's a, what I consider to be a potential dangerous situation that is presenting itself with this continued kicking of the facilities plan by the Hayden Lake Sewer District down the road, that if something were to happen of any serious nature with the plant or the operation, that there may not be a plan how to fix it, nor the cost how to fix it and things like that. And I think it's time that the people, the patrons, constituents of the Hayden Area Regional Sewer District become aware of exactly what's happening with that. And I attended a City Link meeting, is that last week? I was here in that room? Was that the city administrators or, okay. And seeing as, I'm glad we did authorize our contribution to it, because I think it's another important issue that, in my opinion, there's an attempt to shift the cost of it from the county to the cities, and the taxpayers are still gonna be paying for it. It's just gonna be, you know, you've got a shell here and a shell there, and you do this with it, you're still gonna be paying for it. So I think people should try and start paying attention to exactly what's happening with that also, but that's it for that.
Thanks, Ed. Matt, any other?
Just one bit of information. Maybe this has been mentioned already, but if not, if it has, sorry, but our, it would be the Treasurer of Cooney County decided that he was gonna keep the penalties and interest on taxes that were late, and the Idaho Supreme Court ruled recently, I think it was a couple weeks ago, that he's not entitled to keep those fees and that the cities will benefit from that. And there was a couple of cities, I think, that were named plaintiffs. I know Coeur d'Alene, maybe Post Falls, but that's good. And so we will, we will get some more money from the county, which is a good thing.
Unless the legislators fix that.
So for clarification, that's penalties and interest that accrue on unpaid or late property taxpayers.
Yes. Thank you. I don't have anything to add for reports. Are there any requests for future agenda items? Okay, I'm not hearing any. The only, go, go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, so I want to follow up on something that you brought up before the meeting officially started. Maybe this is a suggestion we could do going forward in order to avoid what happened this, for this meeting, is that we have some kind of posted calendar. Council members could put their vacation time, I put that in quotes, or something when they intend not to, or will not be able to attend a meeting, and then we could avoid the possibility of seeing two or more members not being present and not having a quorum. This is something that's done in private industry all the time. I don't know if it would be feasible to do as a public entity, but just putting it out there as a proposal.
Thanks, Tom, appreciate it. Okay, the only thing I would throw out for a future agenda item, Lisa and I have talked, and we do want to get the budget in the rearview mirror a bit. We are going to work on our law enforcement contract probably the second half of August, and following the fallout of that process, I assume that we'll have many discussions about the shape of law enforcement in Hayden, so I want to caution the council to just, please be patient and give us time to work this through one step at a time. So that's just an FYI, and with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So we're done. We're done. Thanks. Thanks, Tom.